It's on now, all right. Good evening, everyone, and welcome to City Council. First and foremost, please go ahead and silence your cellphones, just so we can all remember that, even me. All right. Martha's not here yet, but we'll go ahead. We're going to stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
(Pledge of Allegiance) To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Jackson, we're going to begin with employee recognitions.
In just a moment.
Wanted to thank Mayor and Council for this opportunity. We have a number of recognitions and awards to share with you this evening. We've stored these up since before the holidays, so we have a lot to be proud of and a lot of folks to recognize, so please bear with me. Would not want to slight these folks in the least, but know this will take a little bit of time. But we're here tonight to recognize departments, teams, and individuals for extraordinary accomplishments, in many cases where they've been recognized by their peers, professionals in their field, both on a state and a national level. So these are quite significant. First of all, I just want to highlight a couple of recent events, and I will not call on individuals to be recognized for these, but I do think they're worth noting here for you and the community. These are significant public safety responses to extraordinary events in the last couple of weeks. As you know, on January 2nd, the Asheville Police Department responded to Mack Street following reports of a discharged weapon in a residential property. The ensuing standoff, in which the armed suspect sought refuge in his apartment, required the evacuation of nearby neighbors, the involvement of Asheville Police Department Emergency Response Team, and a crisis negotiation team. The standoff lasted overnight as temperatures dropped well below freezing. The officers' effort was bolstered by invaluable assistance from Buncombe County Sheriff's Office, shout out for their participation, and Henderson County Sheriff's Office, who came at 2:00 in the morning, I believe, to relieve them as well. These teams allowed our officers to take breaks during nearly a 24-hour event. On the morning of January 3rd, I'm pleased to tell you that the standoff was resolved without any injury to our officers, Buncombe County or Henderson Counties officers, to the suspect, or to nearby neighbors. The professionalism and ability displayed by these officers and our police department is commendable, and our community is safer because of their presence. That would be the first recognition I'd like to make tonight.[214.62][214.62](APPLAUSE). On January 10th, another regional incident. A gas line beneath Sand Hill Road in the Enka Fire District ruptured and ignited, sending flames more than 50 feet in the area and rocking the area for miles around. More than 40 Asheville Fire Department personnel responded to provide mutual aid alongside regional departments. By mutual aid, I mean this is not within the city; we are assisting other departments, primarily the Enka Fire Department, in responding. The fire burned on for just under two hours. The incident required evacuation of nearby buildings, a process which was aided by the participation of a city bus to evacuate. Once the fire was extinguished, City of Asheville Public Works and Water Resources crews, in coordination with North Carolina Department of Transportation, came in and dealt with the impacted utilities, went to work through the night and the next day to replace a section of the damaged line. Sand Hill Road was open to traffic by Sunday night and available for Monday morning commute, so businesses were not disrupted. Though the roadway was not within the City of Asheville boundaries, the teams on hand were able to provide the best and the quickest response. So without question, without needing to have you all intervene, we stepped forward and took care of that as regional partners. So I would like to commend all of these departments, the Fire Department, the Water Department, Public Works, police, who all responded and worked through the weekend to make that happen.[313.83][313.83](APPLAUSE). We're also very proud of our Water Resources Women's Pipe Tapping Team. I'd like to ask them to stand where they're seated. They are Michelle Smith, Brenna Cook, Virginia Pardo, and Mariah Rigenberg. The department's water pipe tapping team is being recognized for outstanding work during the 93rd Annual North Carolina American Waterworks Association. The women's pipe tapping team, called the Copperheads, put up a time of 2:40. This was the national award-winning time, oh, just 20 seconds off the national award-winning time, so we're very proud of their accomplishments and salute these women for their fine work and showing their professional competence among their peers.[373.62][373.62](APPLAUSE). Now to recognize our Development Services Department. As you know, we've downsized the Development Services Department from over 70 personnel to just over 50. We've streamlined the operation; we're now automating the process of plans and permits; and we have a responsibility to be annually rated and certified in the state. And the combination of these ratings are gathered from all the different departments throughout the state, and the average of those ratings are what drive our statewide insurance rates. Okay? And so this process goes on, and we participate in it, and we could get a score from 1 to 10. The average and the norm in the state is predominantly 4 to 5, and then the insurance rates are based upon that. Our ISO rating grade was a 2. And we're not allowed to know who the other party was that received a 2, but we know we're only one of two departments that have the rating of 2 in the entire state. So I'd like to ask all of our building code officials for their effectiveness grading to please be able to be recognized.[456.81][456.81](APPLAUSE). These scores show how dedicated to quality and integrity we run our Building Inspections Department, and so you can be proud of that, and folks can feel safe knowing that we have one of the most thorough and highest integrity departments in the state. We also would like to recognize our engineering team involved in the Radtip Project, the River Arts District Transportation Improvement Project. Our team was, and if they'll please stand, Dan Bechtold, Stephanie Munson Dahl, Ken Putnam and Kathy Ball. The American Council of Engineering Companies of North Carolina, Engineering and Excellence Awards is an annual competition that honors and recognizes engineering and surveying firms for projects which demonstrate the highest degree of achievement value and ingenuity. On November 7th, the engineering firm of C.D. Smith and the City of Asheville received an honors award for the preliminary design of the River Arts District Transportation Improvement Project. You will be hearing more about this project later today as we try to move into the actual final engineering design, so hats off to C.D. Smith and our staff who work directly with them.[546.82][546.82](APPLAUSE). Now I have three more to go, and these are really achievements of excellence as well. For an achievement in excellence, for the Engineering Design Award for the Cherokee Retaining Wall, this is the wall that you recognize, remember, failed in North Asheville in the Albemarle Park Historic District, and our task was to design and recreate that and maintain its historic character, make it functional and safe, and it was truly a challenge and an engineering feat to accomplish that. I'd like to call forward to actually formally receive the award, which was granted back in November, the team of Greg Schuler, John Gavin, please come forward, Brian Estes, Lee
Thank you, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council. Our one of the most important team members was not able to make it tonight. Lee Morrison, our construction inspector, is in Mississippi doing some deer hunting, but great team here. We had a good team with our consultants, and the community did as much as anybody to help us come up with the design, and the patience that they showed through the construction was admirable. We really appreciate that.
Congratulations.
Two more to go. Believe it or not, Asheville is a Silver Walk Friendly Community, and that did not happen by accident. Asheville was recently named a Silver Walk Friendly Community by the Pedestrian and Bicycle Center in Chapel Hill. Asheville is one of 44 Walk Friendly Communities in the nation and the fourth to be so designated in North Carolina. This is based upon the engineering, education, and investments that are being made with the approval and direction of the City Council, and they enhance our pedestrian facilities in the community. You're well aware of the additional lane miles, sidewalks that have gone in, and the safe routes to schools, connections that are being put in, and partnerships with the North Carolina Department of Transportation. I'd like to call up Marcia Stickford, Barb Me, Sergeant Scott Pruitt, Officer John Derrick, Scott Barnwell, and Alan Glines to take this plaque from me.[741.12][741.12](APPLAUSE).
Thank you very much. We are grateful for the support that we receive from you to do the work we do, and the support that we receive from our colleagues who work every day to make things more walkable, who enforce the codes and who enforce the laws. And it takes everybody. We could not have done this application without the energy of our volunteers from the Bicycle and Pedestrian Task Force. They kind of come together from time to time to form my staff. It's cool, but they are wonderful, and we cannot do these kinds of things without them.[795.01][795.01](APPLAUSE).
I really appreciate Barb Me, that was Barb Me, our coordinator for those activities, recognizing the Pedestrian Task Force. They really do prod and give us pride in what we're doing, and their efforts have been the catalysts to move us forward. They really are an inspiration to all of us. Finally, I'd like to call Steve Schoefford with Tim Burdine, please.[832.82][832.82](APPLAUSE). We have an extraordinary employee in Tim Burdine, 11-year employee of the Water Services Department. On November 11th, Timothy received the Water Distribution Operator of the Year from the North Carolina American Waterworks Association.[867.01][867.01](APPLAUSE). And then, on November 12th, he received a national-level honors recognition for meritorious service. This award is given to distribution operators who are deserving of special recognition, special performance in the development of new and modified equipment or significant process modifications to our Water Maintenance Division. And so Steve might have a thing to say as well, and...
Please, Steve.
Thank you. Mayor, members of council, Tim Burdine is truly an exemplary employee. I've only been here about four and a half years, approaching five years, and from just about the first week I was here, I would call Tim and say, "You know, I noticed this over in this area," and he'd say, "Yes, sir, I'll get right on it." I'd call in the middle of the night, "Yes, sir, I'll get right on it." He's just a willing employee, very knowledgeable of our system. He's put in the time and the hours. He's constantly asking questions, "What can I do better? How can I learn to do this better?" He's had good mentorship and good training, but he's taken it upon himself to pursue that level of excellence that was recognized by the state and by the International AWWA Organization, so we're very proud of what he's done. If I could digress for just a second, Gary talked to you earlier about the Copperheads, the women's tapping team, and he used a time of 2 hours and some minutes. I'm not saying I could make a tap in 2 hours and some minutes. There are a lot of people who can, but actually their time was the 2 minutes and 43 seconds or whatever it was.[997.13][997.13](LAUGHTER). It was quite an accomplishment. It was a very good time for them.[1003.82][1003.82](LAUGHTER). But we have a very competitive division. They're always striving to improve and striving for excellence, and Tim certainly is a shining example of that, and I'm very pleased that he won those awards.[1023.54][1023.54](APPLAUSE).
Tim, would you shake the council members' hands, too? This is not every day that we have a nationally-recognized employee. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
Now that we have everyone in a really good mood, we're ready to do the rest of this. The consent agenda. Item H needs to be removed. The manager is requesting that this be pulled off.
Thank you.
And if there's anything else anyone would like to have voted on separately, let me know now, anything?
I have a question that I'd like to have Ken Putnam answer, but I don't have to vote on it separately.
Okay, that's fine.
Yeah.
So no items to be voted on separately. Ken, we know there's going to be a question ready. Go ahead.
Oh, okay. On item B1, we discussed this in the Public Safety Committee, that we're being given a 6,000-gallon tank. In the supporting paperwork, it notes that we're paying $75,000 to move the tank and install it, and that a new tank would cost $30,000. The thing that I was asked by a constituent was, "Well, hold it. If you only paid $30,000 to have one delivered here, how much of the $75,000 is moving it?" In other words, they were looking the gift horse in the mouth.
Right, that's a good question.
"How much are we saving?" is really what I want to ask.
Right. That's a good question. The cost for us to get the tank moved from Silva to Asheville is right at $8,000. All the rest of that $75,000 is going to be the cost to get the pad poured, get it set up, get the tank set up. Remember, this tank empty weighs 59,000 pounds.
So it would cost the remaining, the 67, whatever, $68,000, $69,000, to prepare for a new tank also?
Yes, sir, that's correct. The net savings we have compared to buying a new one would be the $35,000 minus the 8, so roughly $27,000.
Yeah. I just wanted to make that clear. Thank you very much.
Sure, you're welcome.
Are there any other questions from the consent agenda? After we have a motion.
Move approval of the consent agenda, Mayor.
Second. Okay. Is there anyone from the public wishing to comment on any item on the consent agenda? No? Okay. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, we have adopted the consent agenda. Under Presentations and Reports, we have one presentation tonight, and Barbara Whitehorn is making her debut here tonight. Here she is, ladies and gentlemen. And maybe the city manager would just take a moment to introduce us to Ms. Whitehorn.
Ms. Whitehorn is our new Director of Finance and Management Services. She came to us from the city of Arlington, Texas. I did not know her, even though that is the neighboring community to a community that I left, but everybody there really misses her, which is our gain and their loss. Her education includes a master's degree from University of Texas at Dallas, and we're very pleased to have you, Barbara.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. I'm very excited to be in Asheville. So far, it's a whirlwind, but it's a great community and a wonderful city to work for so far. So I'll just jump in. You all have the staff report that kind of details the CAFRA a little bit, and I'd like to introduce Colin Hill from Cherry Becker, our external auditors, and he'll give a brief presentation on the results of the financial audit for the 2013 fiscal year.
As you mentioned, my name is Colin Hill. I'm with Cherry Becker. I'm an audit partner. I'm pleased to be here tonight to present to you on behalf of Eddie Burke, your engagement partner, and your engagement team, as well as Cherry Becker. We have wrapped up our audit for the year ending June 30, 2013. The purpose of my comments is just to give you a high-level overview of our audit. We have wrapped up our audit for the year. We go through a risk-based approach in developing our audit approach, and in doing that, we look at where we think the financial statements are most susceptible to fraud, and then we develop our procedures based on that. We actually issue four opinions in the CAFRA. There is one up front, which is the opinion on the financial statements, and then there are also three opinions in the back of the CAFRA, which are in the compliance section. The first of those opinions in the back is actually the Yellow Book opinion, and that deals with internal control over financial reporting and basically whether the city complied with laws, regulations, North Carolina general state statutes. Then there are two other opinions behind that, and they deal with internal control over compliance and actual compliance with major federal program dollars and then also major state dollars. As far as the information that was provided to us, when we arrived, everything was pulled and readily available for us to look at. Full cooperation from management and everyone else that we dealt with. We very much appreciate that. It makes it a lot easier. We know they have a day job, and we're just kind of a pain for a little while, and very appreciative of all of their help. As far as our areas of focus, though, one thing that I would like to draw your attention to is two standards that were implemented in the current year, GASB 63 and GASB 65. And 63 really deals with deferred inflows and outflows of resources and net position. If you were to compare the current year's statements to the prior year's statements, you will notice that last year, basically, the government-wide balance sheet was called the Statement of Net Assets. This year, it is called the Statement of Net Position. So just the change in terminology didn't really affect the city at all, but the deferred outflows and deferred inflows did affect the city. So in prior years, the city actually capitalized deferred bond issuance costs, and when 63 was issued, it changed the way those were accounted for, so you will see a prior period adjustment that basically removes those deferred bond issuance costs from the balance sheet or Statement of Net Position. 63 and 65 also introduced deferred inflows and outflows. Not a real significant impact to the city. You do have some deferred inflows and deferred outflows. They mainly relate to prepaid taxes and then an item that results from a refunding of debt. So not big dollar amounts, but you will notice the presentation changed in the current year. As far as where we focused our procedures, I mentioned that we focus on a risk-based approach, which basically focuses our procedures on high-dollar amounts or where we think the financial statements are most susceptible to fraud. Cash and investments. For cash, we looked at the, tested the reconciliations, and then for investments, we looked at the valuation testing and tested there. For receivables and revenue, analytically reviewed those areas and then also confirmed what we could with third parties where possible. As far as capital assets, looked at the capital asset roll forwards and then tested the capital outlay reconciliation, analytically reviewed depreciation expense. Accounts payable, our big test there is the search for unrecorded liabilities, and then payroll expenses, mostly analytical procedures. As far as debt, obtained the debt roll forwards, looked at the ending balances and tied any of that stuff out to confirmations from third parties where possible, the main confirmation being with the local government commission. As far as single audit, I mentioned the four opinions. The last two deal with our test of compliance, which I'll discuss when I discuss the results. Litigation, we check in with council to make sure that there's not any outstanding litigation that would have an impact on the disclosures or the financial statement balances. And then also, we look at judgments and estimates that management makes. As you're all aware, anytime you make an estimate, the actual results could differ from that estimate. Just to make sure that management hasn't put any bias in those estimates, the four main estimates you can see there for the city, allowance for doubtful accounts, depreciation expense, and then the estimates over OPEB and the law enforcement officer separation allowance. So what's the big picture? What's the result of our audit? So the first opinion that I mentioned on the financial statements, the opinion is unmodified, which is a clean opinion. That's the highest level of assurance that we can provide to you as your CPA firm. It basically means that the financial statements can be relied on by you and third parties and that they are materially correct. As far as the second opinion, the Yellow Book opinion, deals with internal control, statutory compliance, as I mentioned, with laws, regulations, North Carolina general state statutes. There were no internal control matters or statutory compliance matters to bring forth to your attention. One thing I do want to mention, in the current year, there was a change on statements of auditing standards, which impacts us as your auditor. If you were to compare the prior year opinions to the current year opinions, you would notice that they differ a little bit in form, but that was really just the form of the opinion. There is not really any change to the content, it's just how it's laid out in paragraph form. And then also, if you remember, in prior years, we may have referred to an unqualified opinion as a clean opinion. It changed the terminology. It's now unmodified opinion. Unqualified, unmodified, still a clean opinion, highest level that we can provide you, level of assurance. As far as the federal opinion on compliance, internal control over compliance, it also is an unmodified opinion, again, a clean opinion. Nothing to bring forth to your attention as far as internal control, but there were three instances of non-material non-compliance that we noted during our testing. And basically, these were required to be reported based on what the matter was, but in all three instances, the question costs were below the reporting threshold to any authority, authoritative body, and the question costs for the other two were either not applicable or deemed completely immaterial. The first one, Davis Bacon Act, related to Department of Transportation grant, federal transit cluster, and then the other two dealt with HUD, Community Development Block Grant. As far as state dollars, this is the last opinion that I mentioned, the fourth opinion in the very back in the compliance section. Again, unmodified opinion, clean opinion. As far as internal control and statutory compliance matters, nothing to bring to your attention. There were no findings. There's also what we call a SAS 114 letter that has been given to you all. You can read it at your leisure. I'm going to cover everything in this presentation that's in that letter. These are just certain things that were required to report to you at the end of every audit. Our judgment about the quality of the policies, estimates, and disclosures, clean opinion. We don't think there's any discrepancy in what should be there and not being there. Critical accounting policies and practice... Critical accounting policies and practices, we felt everything was in the disclosures or has been discussed. Adoption of changes in accounting principles, I mentioned the GASB 63 and 65 already. That was the material implementation in the current year. As far as any corrected or uncorrected audit adjustments, there were none, corrected or uncorrected. We did not have any disagreements with management about anything. We are not aware of any consultations with any other accountants. There were no major issues discussed with management prior to our retention as your auditor. No difficulties encountered. The last thing I'll point out is that there is a representation letter that we received from management, management signs, and gives to us basically saying, at the end of the audit, they have responded truthfully and fully to all of our inquiries. And they signed that letter and returned it to us. Other issues arising from the audit, there, the clarity standards already mentioned. There were four suggestions that we put in a management letter that dealt with IT. And basically, these are just best practices, things that we noted during our procedures. In an ideal world, you would have all of this stuff implemented. Again, you as the city have to weigh the cost versus benefit of implementing all of this. The items noted there, actual documentation of two policies, change management and information security. And then monitor, actual monitoring of privileged users. And then implementing an intrusion detection and prevention system. That really concludes all of my comments. I'd be happy at this point in time to answer any questions if anyone has any.
All right, are there any questions?
The only question I would ask is, what was management's response to the IT recommendations?
We don't specifically request a response because they did not rise to the level of a formal reporting. We just, as a value add, pass those along. That as an ideal world, best practice, you would have these implemented. But we didn't formally request a response.
May we provide you with a response? I'll send it to all council once we develop it.
Just a quick comment. I appreciate Mr. Burke Yell's work. This is the second year, or is this the first year you guys have?
The first.
This is the first. At the Finance Committee and Council, we made a decision a couple of years ago to rotate every, I think it's three to five years, CPA firms, which is a good practice to assure different sets of eyes from time to time on our stuff. And I hope the public appreciates the clean bill of health in terms of our fiscal responsibility and accounting that we've gotten from our new auditor that's looked very closely at what we've done. It's, I think it's a testament. Gary Jackson has a finance management background. We've had really good staff focusing on financial management systems in recent years. And I think it shows here. Barbara, I had a question for you. Were you going to come back up once he's done, or?
It's just a presentation, but.
Well, the question I would have for you. Ms. Whitehorn provided some comments in the documents that came to council regarding fund balance. And if you could just give us a one-minute summary of that. Again, I think the public should hear about the trend on our fund balance and the relative health that suggests. And you can go ad lib from the hip there. It's not fair for me to ask you to talk about numbers.
This is our initiation hazing.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks to staff for all of their help. It's greatly appreciated.
Okay, general fund balance, which I'm assuming that's probably where we want to go. We have a policy, of course, established by council of maintaining a 15% of the next year's expenditures fund balance. That's to keep a healthy fund balance. It also helps the rating agencies determine that we're going to make good on our debts, that we're in a good position financially as a city. In 2012, we ended the year with 15.9%, which is good. It's above our threshold. It was a good fund balance. In 2013, however, we ended with 17.6%. So we're seeing a positive trend, which, as I'm sure you all know, having come through the financial crisis here in Asheville, that is a huge relief to staff and to council to start seeing those numbers trend upwards and see that economic recovery really starting to play out.
Perfect.
Great question, appreciate that. Barbara, maybe if you can, or with Eric's help perhaps, why don't you recognize your staff here that work closely with you, with the audit team?
Sorry. I would like to thank the whole finance team there, they are here, the audit services.
Maybe stand up for us, so we can look at you.
Rhonda Devon couldn't make it, the manager, she's had to go to Texas for a family emergency. But we have Erin Marie, Crystal, and Tia. And they really did do a stellar job this year. They took on a great deal more of the CAFR preparation, actual work than ever before. Previously, the auditors had produced the whole CAFR. And now we've brought it in-house. So that's a huge deal. And it takes a lot of technical knowledge and staff time to complete that kind of thing. And we have the support, of course, of IT and all the other functions of the city that we need to.
CAFR that she's, the CAFR that she's referring to is C-A-F-R, Consolidated Annual Financial Reports. It's about that thick. So it takes quite a bit of work and meticulous effort.
Sorry, I make assumptions sometimes that I shouldn't, but no.
We're down with the lingo. We got it. CAFR.
Yeah, you got it, CAFR. Thank you.
Thank you.
I wanted to comment that the change to unmodified from unqualified is very satisfying. Every year, the unqualified made me feel a little queasy.
Isn't that, wasn't that an awful term?
I agree.
Could we have a motion and council action to formally accept that?
Yes, can we have a motion?
I'm moved.
Second. We've got a motion if anyone has any comments. All right, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, thank you very much. We're going to move on to the public hearing portion of our agenda. Okay, here's the ground rules for our public hearings. If you wish to make a comment during one of these items during the public hearing, you have three minutes to speak. However, if you represent a group and can find three people to yield their time to you, you can speak for 10 minutes. So the first item on the public hearing agenda is a public hearing to consider the permanent closing, I think it's supposed to be of excessive Summit Avenue or right-of-way and an unopened right-of-way between Summit and Allen Avenues. And Ken Putnam is here to present the item to council.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and City Council members. I'm Ken Putnam, the interim Public Works Director. And tonight, you are to consider the permanent closing of some right-of-way, shown in yellow on this map. There's two actual portions of right-of-way. There's some right-of-way along Summit Avenue that's running east and west. And then there's an unopened right-of-way that extends from Allen Avenue to the south, all the way up to Summit Avenue to the north. During this process, staff has determined that there will be no negative impacts for this to happen. And then the multimodal commission reviewed this request and approved it unanimously in December. And they also wanted to add one condition to be considered. And that would be that the developer would consider some multimodal improvements as well as this. And we will be adding that condition to the resolution before it's signed. Based on that, then, staff recommends approval of the resolution. I'm here to try to answer questions, and the developer is here to answer any questions you may have.
Any questions?
One quick question. Ken, it sounds, it didn't say so in the staff report. It sounds like the various parcels or lots maybe are aggregated. And one developer has acquired or controls them. And that this is sort of in the interest of a future development that would, that would exist on several parcels, I guess.
Yes, sir, that's correct.
Okay, good.
Any other questions? Since there aren't any other questions, I'm assuming we're okay not to hear from the developer? Or would the developer like to be here?
Well, that's up to you. I think they're just here to answer any questions that you might have.
Okay, then I think we'll leave it at that. Thank you. Do I have a motion for this one?
I move to approve the permanent closing of the excessive Summit Avenue right-of-way and the unopened right-of-way between Summit and Allen Avenues.
Second. Do you have a question?
I thought we were going to modify the resolution to include the multimodal transit. Oh, so you just say as amended?
Say it, say as amended, as amended.
As amended.
Are you going to open the public hearing?
And I'm going to open the public hearing. And I would, and I wanted to note that the description of the area to be closed is going to be better clarified. So that'll be subject to the better clarification of the property description. I'm going to now open up the motion for a public hearing. And if anyone wishes to make a comment on this item, feel free to do so now. I cannot believe that we don't have folks that want to talk about this issue. All right, closing the public hearing, all those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. The next item on the public hearing agenda is a public hearing to consider a substantial amendment to the 2011-2012 Consolidated Annual Action Plan for Community Development Block Grant and Home Funds to allow the Asheville Housing Authority to repurpose $40,037 of CDBG funds to support public facility improvements at the Reed Center. Jeff Sodinger's already there, all right.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Mayor and Council members. In the 2011-2012 Action Plan, a grant was authorized for the Asheville Housing Authority in support of a hope six or choice neighborhoods development at Lee Walker Heights. That commitment of the city for that grant, which was going to support community information and support for existing residents, went in with two applications for Choice Neighborhood Planning Grant Funds. Unfortunately, neither of those grants was awarded. The Housing Authority will pursue other methods to support revitalization efforts at Lee Walker Heights, but is looking now to complete the many diverse elements of the Reed Center renovation, which, as you know, is progressing quickly towards its purpose as a green jobs training and education center. This repurposing of these CDBG funds would allow for the continued completion of infrastructure work. It would first be targeted towards providing additional broadband and internet capacity at the Reed Center, an essential part of that education and training program. If not necessary for that use, it'll be purposed other support, to support the additional construction and the completion of activities there. The Housing and Community Development Committee has reviewed this repurposing, which is a substantial amendment to our 2011-2012 Action Plan, and recommends its adoption by you. And I'm pleased to answer any questions you or the public may have about this.
Any questions?
Just to comment, the work that's ongoing down there at the Reed Center between GO and the Housing Authority, they've really got their shoulders to the wheel in what's going to be a really reclaimed historical place down there that's going to really be able to not only be that place for the community to come together, but also translate into those future jobs. It's a very exciting project, you know, we're going to be hearing more about it.
Anyone else, question or comment? All right, give me a motion.
Okay, I take great pleasure in making this motion because, as Gordon said, this is important work and it's really taking place and good stuff happening because of it. So I'd like to move to amend the 2011-2012 Annual Action Plan to repurpose $40,037 allocated to the Asheville Housing Authority to support infrastructure development at the Reed Center.
Second. All right. I will now open this item up for public comment. Anyone wishing to make comment on this item, please do so now. All right, closing the public hearing. Any further questions, comments? No, all right. Any, all those in favor of the motion, please say aye. Any opposed? All right, the motion passes. Thank you very much. The next item on the public hearing agenda is the Asheville Area Riverfront Redevelopment Commission. And the one thing I should have asked, do we need a separate vote on each of the four? Okay, we do. But we can hear the full presentation and then take action on each item. All right, thank you.
Hi, thanks, Mayor and Council, for taking time to hear this item tonight. The requests before you today are changes to Asheville's Code of Ordinances that in fact would dissolve an existing city board called the River District Design Review Committee. It would transfer their primary function, which is the performance of River District Design Review, to the Asheville Area Riverfront Redevelopment Commission. And by adding a River District Design Review map to the design review guidelines, you would effectively expand the River District Design Review area from properties that before were just River District zoning to now anything that is within the Wilma Dykman Riverway planning area, the city's focus area. So I wanted to provide you a little background about how we got here and some information on community support. Good architectural and urban design conveys what a district has to offer. And it gives an idea to the public about what a place is. And this is something that the Asheville City Council recognized about 20 years ago. It's a best practice that's used in planning and economic development. So 20 years ago is when the River District Design Review Committee was formed. Over the course of that 20 years, much has changed in the River District economically, socially, culturally, especially with development practices. Your River District Design Review Committee Board recognized that. And that is why last year at their August meeting, they recommended that staff pursue the changes that are presented in this report to you tonight. As part of that process, we then went to the PED Committee of City Council and got a nod for staff to go ahead with these ordinance changes. We went to the Asheville Area Riverfront Redevelopment Commission, which, as you know, is a partnership between local communities and county governments, the Council of Independent Business Owners, the Asheville Area Chamber of Commerce, Riverlink, and obviously, the City of Asheville, and got their unanimous support for these ordinance changes. And we went to Planning and Zoning Commission and had them review the changes to Chapter 7, so that is in their purview. And they also unanimously supported and recommended to City Council that you accept these changes to the ordinances. Regarding notification, of course, we advertised this as we always do. Wanted to put in a note that the expansion of the design review area affects about 120 properties. I did bring a very large map, in case there's anyone in the public that's interested in looking at it. And it was online for you to review. Of those 120 or so properties, there are about 90 individual or unique property owners. And they all received notification by mail. I received two phone calls about this item. One of them was from a new property owner in the River District, and they expressed clear support. This is someone who actually had served on the Downtown Commission and is very familiar with design review. I also received a phone call from a longtime property owner. And she said that she was neutral about it. And she was calling to clarify that this was an advisory procedure and not a regulatory seizure. So just to clarify for those people watching at home especially, that River District Design Review is purely an advisory practice. Staff comment on alignment with goals and plans. These changes are going to help make the administration of your River District policies more efficient. It's going to reduce the number of boards and commissions that staff has to work with. It's also in alignment with your council's strategic goals on economic development and job creation. It was going to help promote infill development, the kind of development that is laid out in the 2025 plan and the Wilma Dykman Riverway Master Plan. So the staff recommendation is for City Council to adopt an ordinance dissolving the River District Design Review Committee and reassign the River District Design Review function to the Asheville Area Riverfront Redevelopment Commission, to adopt an ordinance amending Sections 7310 and 7518 of the Unified Development Ordinance to effect that change, and to adopt an ordinance amending Section 218520, which is the Asheville Area Riverfront Commission ordinance. And then to adopt a resolution to revise the River District Design Review Guidelines and add the map. I am happy to answer any questions.
Are there any questions? And this is for all, for C, 1, 2, 3, and 4.
That's right, synthesized report. That's right, synthesized report.
No, no, yes.
I'd like to make a motion dissolving the River District Design Review Committee and reassigning the River District Design Review function to the Asheville Area Riverfront Redevelopment Commission.
Second.
All right. There is a motion for Item C1. If there's anyone wishing to make public comment on that item, please let us know. Okay. Seeing none, I will close the public hearing, and we have a motion. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, I need a motion on Item C2.
Mayor, I move to adopt an ordinance amending Sections 7310 and 7518 instead of UDO to effect the change described in Section 1.
Second.
All right, I'll open the public hearing on Item C2. Anyone wishing to make comment? Seeing none, I will close the public hearing. All those in favor of the motion to approve Item C2, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? No, I need a motion on C3.
Mayor, I move to adopt an ordinance amending Section 2-185.20, the Asheville Code of Ordinances, to effect the change described in Section 1.
Second.
All right, I'm opening the public hearing on the motion on Item C3. Anybody wishing to make comment? Seeing none, I will close the public hearing. All those in favor of a motion to approve Item C3, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, C4.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to adopt a resolution to revise the River District Design Guidelines to include a new River District Design Review Area Map that will serve as the basis for performing River District Design Review.
Second.
All right, I'll open the public comment for the approval of Item C4. Seeing none, I will close the public hearing on Item.
Just real briefly, before we move on.
We were on a roll.
I know, we were on a roll. I just really want to just take a moment to thank everyone who has served on the River District Design Review Committee over the years. This has been all-volunteer, labor-of-love advisory committee that has come together to work with folks who were trying to get stuff built down there to make sure that it was not gonna get swept away by floods, that it was gonna serve City Council's strategic goals. We've had a lot of really smart, focused Asheville lovers in there, and so I just wanna take a moment and thank them for their service.
Right now, where was I with that?
Voting time.
I see that Patty Torno just walked in the room. Did you wanna say anything about we're doing this item? Right now, we're really moving along. She's thinking about it.
Are you ready?
No, no, it's that we are so fast.
You're so fast, you're so efficient, good job. My name is Patty Torno. I'm the Chair of the Asheville Area Riverfront Redevelopment Commission, and we, as a commission, are absolutely for all of the changes that y'all are looking at for the River District Design Review Committee, as well as all the ordinance changes that go along with that. So, if that's helpful at all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, did I close the public comment for C4? I did, okay, thank you. All right, all those in favor of the motion approving Item C4, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, we're done with C. Next on our public hearing agenda is a public hearing to consider the rezoning of a portion of property fronting Robin Hood Road, Beaverbrook Road, and Beaverbrook Court from RS2 Residential Single Family Low Density District to RS4 Residential Single Family Medium Density District. Blake Esselston, okay, say it for me.
Esselston.
Esselston, thank you. Will present this item to us, thank you.
Good evening. The property in question is located in North Asheville. In fact, it's about as far north as you can get in the corporate limits. It's near the upper end of the Asheville Country Club Golf Course. It is on the lower slopes of a mountain that old maps call Killian Knob. The residential development over here is the Sherwood Heights subdivision. You can see a little bit of Reynolds Mountain. Up here and off to the north, in the town of Woodfin, is the Versant development. The entire property is 13 acres. The area that's subject to rezoning is 11 acres. It is wooded, it is vacant, and there are some streams. You may be able to see these blue lines, streams, and it slopes down from left to right as you're looking at this map. There are multiple jurisdictions shown on this map. The hatched area shows the area within city limits. You can see there's a little bit of the parcel here that is in the town of Woodfin. This area here is also in the town of Woodfin. Most of the area here is Town of Woodfin jurisdiction. There's also some unzoned Buncombe County jurisdiction. The area in city limits qualifies as steep slope. In fact, it's in the most restrictive category of our steep slope regulations due to its elevation and slope, and as such, it can currently not be subdivided. It's 13 acres, but is a single lot. The applicant is requesting a rezoning from RS2 to RS4, which would allow it to be subdivided into two single-family lots. This rezoning would not allow an increase in disturbance on the property. The area adjacent over here on this side of the blue line is all RS4 zoning, so there is a substantial amount of RS4 zoning district adjacent to the property, and the Town of Woodfin and Buncombe County zoning in the area would be more permissive as well. Staff feels that the context here is different from, for example, an area on Town Mountain Road. There is the established residential development here. The average lot size of these parcels is less than one acre. The Planning and Zoning Commission unanimously recommended approval of this rezoning at their December 4 meeting. Staff has received about nine communications regarding this. Several of those were just seeking more information or clarification. The rest did express some concern. The dominant issue of concern was increased runoff and erosion that might accompany future In conclusion, staff finds the request to be reasonable but has a mixed recommendation. Staff doesn't generally support upzoning of steep slope areas and would discourage wider application of such zoning changes, but if council chose to depart from this stance, this location is arguably more deserving than others. That concludes my presentation.
All right, are there any questions? You look like you have a question. No? No questions?
Yeah, I have a question, excuse me, Blake. Could you run over that again? If, because of the steepness, only one unit would be allowed there?
Current.
And how does the subdivision affect that, again? You need to go back over that one more time.
Because the current zoning is RS2, in the steepest, most restrictive category of our steep slope ordinance, the average lot size of a newly-created lot in a subdivision has to be 10 acres. So there's no way to divide 13 acres into and have an average lot size of 10 acres. Were this to be an RS4, the average minimum lot size for a newly-developed lot, newly-created lot, would be five acres. So in the RS4 zoning, you could divide this, for example, into a six-acre lot and a seven-acre lot.
So if one, you can get two lots out of it.
And just to follow up, Blake, I'm sorry. I think you said that no, even under the two-lot scenario, no additional disturbance would, could occur on this site, on this parcel, or these parcels compared if the existing zoning remained. Can you explain how that can be?
Sure. In the ordinance, basically, at this elevation in what's called Zone B, this is all in the steepest category, which is over 40% slope, and the way it's structured, it just says that 15% of the area can be graded, regardless of zoning district. So that, the section regarding the amount of disturbance does not depend on the zoning district. The density of residential units does, but the amount of disturbance is irrespective of the zoning district. It's 15% of the 13 acres. Correct.
So how would that work? So you divide it up, and so if one person uses 10 and 1/2%, the other person's gonna be limited by, so they'll be kinda tied together?
When the subdivision is platted, there would be information indicated on the plat to show the restrictions. Typically, what that would mean would be that, let's say, a six-acre parcel was created here and a seven-acre parcel was created here. Each of those would be able to grade 15% of their area, and that total would be the same as the 15% of the current 13-acre parcel. Now, I should clarify, and there have been times when staff has approved a subdivision plat that actually allot's more disturbance onto one lot than the other. They have the option of doing that often. We would do that, for example, to encourage the development at the lower, less sensitive part of a property. But still, the total disturbance, when the subdivision plat is recorded, would, could be no more than 15% of the 13 acres.
And so the 15% disturbance, the thinking behind that is that that will limit the impact on the lots below that location, the existing lots?
Correct. As well as the visual impact, when the steep slope regulations were adopted, one of the major concerns was how the slopes would be, the visual impact, how the development on the slopes would be looked at from below. So it's also to minimize the amount of tree loss. We consider the removal of trees to be disturbance, as well as grading. So it also affects the visual character.
Could you talk briefly about the effect of the current stormwater ordinance and how that relates to concerns that have been expressed by neighbors about runoff, and relate that back to some older development around the city that, where we have experienced stormwater issues, and how the current ordinance might be different from prior years?
I think Mr. Coates is here. There he is, and he's better qualified to talk about the stormwater pieces of this.
Thank you.
Sure. My name's McCray Coates, I'm the Stormwater Services Manager here for the City of Asheville. And how the stormwater ordinance works, basically, is for single-family properties, there's no stormwater requirement for single-family properties. And what that means is, you know, they could come out and develop those properties, not have to put in stormwater BMPs or any quality devices associated with those. They'll still have to do the erosion control measures as they would on any project, though. So they would still have to make sure that there was no sediment offside and things like that.
Okay. Thank you. Is the applicant here?
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I'm Scott Best, I'm a lawyer in Asheville. I represent Sherwood Heights Development, Inc., and Blake has put this thing pretty well, but I'll be more than happy to try to answer any questions that you may have from my client.
Regarding the plans for building, you're obviously aware of the 15% threshold for land disturbance. Were this to go through, how much land would you intend to need to use in order to do what you're trying to do?
Well, right now, these lots are gonna be sold to an, we are hoping to be sold to individual users, so that would really come to the taste and considerations of those particular users and what kinda lot configurations that we're going to do. My sense is that the most simple thing to do would be to have a building site down here on the lower area, and then one over here on this area over here, and that the 15% would be divided based upon the amount of acreage and how it's split. That would be the fairest and the easiest. But right now, we don't really know because we can't market and sell these lots, because right now, it's one big lot, so.
I understand, I understand. I've got some discomfort with the way that we're approaching this, and, you know, if this were one home site, I'm doubtful as to whether a full two acres would be disturbed in a very sensitive 40% steep slope area. That does kinda take us away from our longstanding policy. I understand the conformity with kinda surrounding areas and how there's a case to be made for that, but ultimately, I guess what I'm wondering is, if we were to leave it as is, are we likely to see less land disturbed in a very sensitive area than if we were to divide it and get closer to that 15%? And that uncertainty leaves me uncomfortable.
Well, and Councilman Smith, to that, I mean, please understand, these would be two of the largest lots within miles around, and they would be significantly larger than everything that is existing, you know, within, my goodness, two, three-mile radius from here. I'm not sure about the Versant sizes, but certainly coming down into Sherwood Heights and around the Country Club of Asheville, it's, you're hard-pressed to get above an acre-and-a-half lot. Now admittedly, these are higher up, and this one right here, that's about, just to give you an idea, that's about three and a half or four acres, I believe, is what that acre lot is. So from what's up there, we're gonna be in conformity with what is there. Certainly, these lots, we have the engineering ability to put multiple units on there, but that's not what, and that could, you know, if you put out the, throw out the steep slope ordinance altogether, this could become a highly-density, just like over the mountain is. But I think with this, it's a reasonable, it's reasonable for my client to say, 13 acres is the size of about two city blocks, we should be able to have more than one lot sold. And with that, you know, presumably with the pricing that is looked at, it's gonna have a significant economic impact. You know, these will be expensive lots, and with expensive lots are expensive homes, and with expensive homes in the city comes an expensive tax bill. With very little impact whatsoever, and, well, no impact onto utilities, onto roads. Matter of fact, Beaverbrook Court, coming right through there, which is probably one of the most realistic ways of entering into the property, is a Woodfin road. So you got the Town of Woodfin worrying about the, about road maintenance into it. So, you know, I understand what you're saying about the disturbance, and that perhaps 15% would not be disturbed on one acre, but under the statute, it can be.
I understand.
And that's just what I wanna make sure of.
Go ahead.
We enacted a steep slope ordinance several years ago for this very purpose here, to protect surrounding properties in this situation here, and I think, given that the developer intends to comply with the standards that we have, and if we're looking at a six and a seven-acre lot, probably about a maximum of one acre could be disturbed on each one here. I think, you know, we, personally, I'm gonna support this rezoning proposal here, because I think they're coming out of good faith and meeting the standards that we have established.
Are there any other comments or questions? Well, questions at this point. We'll open it up. All right. All right, I'll open the public hearing on this item. If there's anyone here wishing to speak on this issue, this would be the time. If you'll just come forward and state your name, and, anybody? Okay. I will, I'll close the public hearing on this. Are there any other questions or comments from council before we vote on this item?
I would move to deny the zoning map amendment because I'm real uncomfortable with upzoning on a steep slope.
Okay, we have a motion to deny the request for rezoning.
Second.
Okay, we've got a motion and a second. Okay, so this is, we're doing like a double negative here. So all those in favor of denying the request for rezoning, why don't you raise your hand? Because I can tell right now Maggie's not gonna be able to count. Go ahead and raise your hand. All right, we have two. All right, so the motion fails. Do I have a motion to approve the rezoning?
So moved.
Okay. Do I?
Second.
Okay, and I have a second. All right. Any questions or comments? Do I need to reopen this now we have a second motion, or we've had the public comment period?
No, you don't need to reopen.
Okay, all right. All right, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Okay, I think.
Because you didn't get a two-third vote, it would have to come back for a second.
We got five to two.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Do we wanna raise our hands? All those in favor, raising our hands? Yes, okay. All right.
Six to one now. You have a favor to rezonate? But it's two.
Five to two.
Okay, so we don't need to hear this a second time?
No.
It is done. All right, that was a little bit confusing, and I apologize about that. All right, the next three items on the agenda, all concerned the same matter. So if you don't mind, Ms. Daniels, if you can present all three, and then we'll handle this with three separate motions.
I plan to do that.
That is good, that's good. You're getting to be an old pro at this one.
I was gonna say, I think we've talked about this before. Mayor and council, I am here, and this actually is instigated at your request from last fall, that we propose a rezoning of the properties located in the, along the Caledonia Road area, adjacent to Swananoa River Road. There's an extensive history dating back to 2008 of various development proposals and rezoning proposals. I'm sure you're aware of those. At this time, the At this time, the staff is proposing, and we have gone to Planning Commission, and they voted unanimously in support of these proposals. The, in your three reports, you will note the two where the Kennelworth Inn and an adjacent property are located that is proposed to be resoned from Institutional to RM16. That means the density does not change on these properties and the Inn retains its fully compliance with the zoning code. We could not initiate a rezoning on the Institutional property to the north where the storage area is because that was a conditional zoning, and the property owners chosen not to work with us on that. The three, this is currently owned by Riverlink. These two are owned by Caledonia Development. This is a little split parcel we're taking, taking care of. It's owned by Mr. Trump and Ms. Hedley, and they have been duly notified. We haven't heard from them. But it would make their property go from RS8 and Institutional to RS8. These properties have substantially steep slopes in the 30% to 40% range. The, and these two properties were part of a subdivision that was, happened earlier. These two are still currently owned by Caledonia Development. All of these would go from Institutional to RS8. These were, are the subject of a prior rezoning from Institutional to RS8, as were the properties along Finley that were originally part of this that were rezoned. The last group of properties have access on both Caledonia and Swananoa River Road. Both of them, again, are substantially steep in the 30% to 40% range, and we are proposing that they be rezoned from Institutional to RM8 because they have a little better access. They're also adjacent to a very developable property here, firmly known as the Silverman Property, although it was a conditional zoning that has lost its status and has reverted very recently, which isn't indicated here, back to river. All but this 1.5 acre portion, which already has river zoning, are recommended for Institutional to RM8. At the Planning Commission, there was one speaker who, representing Mr. Howington from Caledonia Development, his attorney spoke against the proposals. There were a number of other speakers who spoke in favor. We have not, however, received a protest petition on this proposal. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Okay, are there any questions? I have a logistical question. Can I open the public hearing on all three, or do I need to do them separately after a motion is made on each one?
It's probably best to do it separately.
Separately, okay. All right, just checking. All right, do I have a motion on item D?
I move to approve the zoning map amendment from Institutional to.
I'm sorry, I meant item E. I said D, I'm sorry. So go ahead, E, you're doing it.
Oh, I'm doing the right one.
Yep.
From Institutional to RM16, residential multifamily, high-density as a standard rezoning, and find that the request is reasonable and is consistent with the comprehensive plan and other adopted plans based on information provided in the staff report and as stated in the staff recommendation.
Second.
All right. Anyone from the public wishing to make comment? I will open the public hearing at this time. Valerie, if you'll just come forward and state your full name. Yank that now.
Good evening.
You can pull that now.
Good evening. My name is Valerie Ho, and I live at 35 Finley Avenue in Kennelworth. Good evening, Mayor Manheimer and City Council members. It has been three and a half long years since Kennelworth appeared in front of City Council on this development issue. Time enough for my hair to go completely gray, as you can see, and time enough for two elections in City Council members. Congratulations to new Mayor Esther Manheimer, new Council member Gwen Whistler, and to re-elected members Cecil Bothwell and Gordon Smith. I want to thank city staff for recommending the rezoning of the rest of the Caledonia property from Institutional to one that is more compatible with our Kennelworth neighborhood. I would also like to thank the five members of P&amp;Z who voted for looking at the big picture of development in the south end of Kennelworth and not allow the spot zoning of the 12.3 acres of remaining land as the developer has started to do. At the P&amp;Z hearing, all members sympathized with the reasons presented by expert neighbor Terry Meek on the dangers of steep slope development. All understood the dangers of extra traffic to our narrow substandard steep roads in the neighborhood. Yet, two members still cited that the private property rights of a developer was more important than the safety and well-being of our neighborhood. The decision to rezon should be based on the facts as presented and not be about the rights of one or hundreds of property owners. If City Council were to zone this property for the very first time, would institutional zoning be deemed the best designation? If the answer is no, then why? And shouldn't the same reasoning apply to rezoning considerations too? This November, after record rainfall in and around Asheville, with storms dumping nearly 12 inches of rain in July alone, causing landslides and sinkholes, which had a profound impact on infrastructure and property, Kathy Ball, Assistant City Manager, asked for the community's voice in a discussion about what we can expect as we adjust to this new reality. She stated that the goal of the city was to discuss options for preventative measures in the future. We have a unique opportunity presented here. Perhaps as a first step towards those preventive measures, City Council should rezon this Caledonia property and stop inappropriate development on Caledonia's very steep slopes. I hope City Council will listen to the recommendation of your own city staff and the P&amp;Z Board and vote yes to the rezoning of the rest of the Caledonia property. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to make comment? All right, I will close the public hearing on item E. We have a motion. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, the motion carries. Can I have a motion on item F?
I move to approve the proposed zoning map amendment for the following properties: PIN 9648726180, PIN 964714686, PIN 9648718648, PIN 9648718624, and the pertinent .16 acre portion of the .34 acre PIN 9648727364. From Institutional to RS8, as a standard rezoning, and find the request is reasonable and consistent with the comprehensive plan and other adopted plans based on information provided in the staff report and as stated in the staff recommendation.
Councilman Bothwell, could you repeat the motion?
Seconds. Did you have a question?
Yeah, I think you skipped the middle one.
We did E and we're doing F.
You did D.
No, I accidentally said D, but you made your motion on E.
That's right.
Yes.
We've done E.
We've done. This is F. D is not in this area of town.
D is the Beaver Dam.
Yeah. Okay, we have a motion and a second. I will open the public hearing on the motion to approve item F. Is there anyone wishing to make comment?
I'm Patsy Bryson, an attorney at Robertson Stevens. I represent the Kennelworth Residents Association, and I'm actually subbing for one of our technical experts who's on his way. And I think I still remember how to use this. This is a map that one of our technical experts has put together using data from the North Carolina, one of the North Carolina departments and the Buncombe County GIS system, showing the average slope. And I think that's also reflected in your staff report. So we heartily recommend that you approve this rezoning based on this slope data. In addition to that, we have put together a slope stability index, again, from the same data. And the dark area shown here, especially there, this is one of the areas under consideration for rezoning. The other area is over in here, and you can see the dark areas are the high hazard for slope stability. In addition, there's moderate hazard area, again, shown in this area, which is one of the, this lot actually jumps across the street here. But that area is also a moderate hazard area. The rest of the area is low hazard, but you can see all of this area is either high hazard or moderate hazard. And with all of the rain we've had in the last year and all the evidence of slope failures, we think this is a prime area for considering a lower-density zoning. And last but not least, another nice colored map, again, using, based on the same data from work done from FEMA studies, that's where all these come from, showing a debris flow path. So if there is slope failure, you can see all the debris would be sliding right down in this area, one of the areas to be considered for a lower-density zoning. So we respectfully request, on behalf of the neighborhood, that you approve this rezoning. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to make comment?
Yes.
Teddy Jordan from the Kennelworth area. Good evening, Mayor, City Council, and city staff. My comments are going to apply to all items. I don't know how to divide them up. So here we are again, meeting on our three and a half-year journey. First, I'd like to express the neighborhood's sincere gratitude for all the opportunities we've had through this process to voice our views. While we may have not seen thing, we may have seen things differently along the way, we have always valued the opportunity to participate in this process, and we are grateful for that privilege. We want to thank the city and all the staff for their efforts. Along the way, it's been said that the neighborhood is anti-development. That, however, is not an accurate statement. By example, Kennelworth supported the prior Silverman Mixed Juice Project fronting Swananoa River Road that included some 225 apartment units, commercial and retail components. And in this case, the neighborhood presented multiple alternatives to the developer, one with 116 apartment units, which is 16% more than the original submittal, but unfortunately, we never received a reply. There are many compelling reasons why this property should be rezoned to a lower density, and you've heard some of those reasons again tonight. We feel lower-density zoning would be in the best interest of all the residents and the neighborhood. On behalf of the Kennelworth neighborhood, I respectfully request that City Council approve city staff's recommendations. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else wishing to make comment? Seeing none, I will close the public hearing. We have a motion. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries. Last item, G.
Mayor, I move to approve the zoning map amendment from Institutional to RM8, residential medium family, multifamily, medium-density as a standard rezoning, and find that the request is reasonable and consistent with the comprehensive plan and other adopted plans based on information provided in the staff report and stated in the staff recommendation.
Second.
All right, I have a motion and a second. I will open the public comment. Anyone wishing to make comment on item G? Seeing none, I will close the public hearing. Yes, oh wait, Chris is good.
Mayor, I just, I just want to, before this final vote here, just take a moment and compliment the Kennelworth neighborhood and the Kennelworth Residents Association for your patience and perseverance towards this, during this long campaign. And I just want to say, it's time to give the Kennelworth community peace of mind about the future of this property here, and I look forward to supporting you.
Ditto.
Yes, I would agree. It's been a long journey, and we appreciate all the hard work you all have put into this. And truly, it's helped reframe how we're trying to approach zoning and thinking about our zoning ordinance and the need to adjust it for future, for future development. All right. I open the floor, I close it, all right, just got to remember the logistics here. All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, that is it. We are done with our public hearings. Way to go, Kennelworth. All right, on our unfinished business agenda, we have items A1 and 2, again, related but requiring separate motions, I assume. And Dan Becktold will make the presentation.
Thank you, Mayor and Vice Mayor, members of council. The action item before you is approval of a contract with the engineering firm, ACDM Smith, to provide the city with construction plans, right-of-way plans, and a number of other deliverable items to the next step toward implementing the River Arch District Transportation Improvement Project. And there's an associated budget amendment that's also an action item on your agenda. This is part of the city's Economic Development Capital Improvements Program, and because it is one of the major initiatives of the city, the city manager asked staff to take the opportunity to update you on where we are with the RAD-TIP and some of the related riverfront initiatives that are going on. So I have a short presentation, and then I'll be happy to answer any questions that you have. Just to recap what the RAD-TIP is, when we say RAD-TIP, it is improvements to Lyman Street and a portion of Riverside Drive in the River Arch District. It's 2.2 miles in length, and it implements a portion of the Wilma Dykman Riverway Master Plan, the transportation portion of that plan. That's a image from the plan, and that's Wilma Dykman herself there on the right. So it's improvements to the road, the stormwater system. It adds bike lanes, sidewalks, street trees, and other streetscape-type amenities, some on-street parking throughout the corridor, and greenways along the river for the entire length of the, of the road. I should say that the greenway parallels the road in some sections and is closer to the river in others. During our first phase of the project, we came up with a preliminary cost estimate of $25 million, but we're, one of our big tasks is to refine that number in this next As I mentioned, we completed a two-year process to arrive at a preliminary design for the project. It involved extensive public involvement, input from stakeholders, and the public really weighed in on what the needs are down there for walkability, bikeability, sense of place, and to correct the deficiencies with stormwater runoff and with the transportation system, the sharp curves, lack of turn lanes, and a number of deficiencies in the corridor. So we arrived at a preferred alternative, which was blessed by the community, through a series of public meetings, and presented to City Council about a year ago. So the environmental document itself was approved by the Federal Highway Administration and the other state agencies that are involved in that review. So we do have an approved environmental document for the project. During this next phase, which is on your agenda today, we'll be having our consultants provide a detailed survey, do soil testing. One of their first deliverables to us will be to look at that intersection of Craven Street and Riverside Drive, and also the railroad bridge as another possible truck route for New Belgium trucks. And so the consultants will be made aware that that's one of the top priorities, is to give us some options for what can be done at those two locations. to give us some options for what can be done at those two locations. And then the complete construction plans for all the elements that I mentioned are complete right-of-way plans, and also all the flood studies and permitting for the project. So it would really be everything that's needed to take the project to construction, with the exception of buying the actual right-of-way. And so some of our next steps are to complete those documents, to develop a strategy and budget to purchase the right-of-way, to start looking at those partnerships toward implementing the project, looking for grants, and funding sources at the federal and state level, establish the budget for construction, and to coordinate with other riverfront initiatives. I like these old postcards, so I throw them into the presentations, but this one is of the construction of that railroad bridge in about 1910. You can see the old Trestle Bridge there in the background. And some of the other related items in the riverfront, the Riverside Drive Development Plan is nearing completion, and you all will be hearing about that from Stephanie Monson Dahl coming up shortly. And also, the city is looking at this as a possible target area for form-based code initiatives, still working on the issues related to unsafe buildings in the corridor. As I mentioned, coordinating with New Belgium improvements, such as the improvements to Craven Street and the intersection at Five Points. And then the plans that are taking place for east of the Riverway and the development of the Klingman Forest and Town Branch Greenways, which includes that Five Points intersection. And that concludes my presentation, and I'll be happy to answer any questions that you might have.
I love the caption under that one, where it says, "Where life is worthwhile." That seems, you know, like a low bar.
I like that, too. I don't know the year of this one, but it's, the railroad bridge is completed, so it's a little later than the other.
As opposed to a place where life is not worthwhile.
TDA should use that.
Yeah, where life is worthwhile. That's catchy.
Two quick questions. The estimating the budget for construction, is that going to be a task of the engineering firm here, or do we take the output of those guys and then do the cost, budget estimating ourselves?
Cost estimating is in their scope of work, and of course, we'll be double-checking and monitoring what they do, but the cost estimating is one of the items that they are to provide to us.
And the engineering for the greenway, there are places, I remember in the drawings, where the greenway diverges and perhaps runs along the riverbank separate from the right-of-way. Does this, does this engineering include the planning for the green where it diverges, or only where the greenway exists in the right-of-way?
It includes all those areas where it diverges, because between the curve where Lyman Street, where Riverside Drive breaks off, and up north toward Craven Street, all of those properties are either owned by the city or Riverlink or nonprofit organizations, so that's going to be part of the engineering for this phase. The south of that point down to Amboy Road, it will be right next to the road, just because of the limited space. North of that, for now, the greenway will come back up and parallel the road, right around the area of the railroad bridge north to Hill Street.
Any other questions? So I, we need a motion on...
Mayor, I move to authorize the city manager, Antu, into a contract with CDM Smith to perform engineering and design services for the RAD tip for an amount not to exceed $2.186 million.
Second.
All right. We have a motion, and technically, we'll open it up for public comment. If anyone's wishing to make comment on the motion to approve item A1, this would be the time. Oh, okay, got it. Good, I'm glad we got you. You're very efficient tonight with these items.
Thank you again. My name is Patty Tornow. I'm the Chair of the Asheville Area Riverfront Redevelopment Commission. The RAD tip is the most important item on our agenda for 2014. It really is the way to move forward on our riverfront. We worked very closely with CDM Smith on Phase 1 of this project and are very happy with the product that they put forth. We have tremendous faith. They really did a great job for public outreach, and we really do look forward to working with them again. We think we will get a really good project, a complete package from them. They definitely understand how to deal with our federal partners, how to deal with our state partners, all the regulating agencies, and we feel like, once we have 100 percent construction drawings, then we will be ready to move forward on this project, and it will make a huge difference on our riverfront. So we, we highly recommend that you say yes. Thank you.
All right, is there anyone else wishing to make comment on this item?
Mayor, you may want to amend that motion. I believe that the budget is 2.2, and I believe that Councilman Gordon said not to exceed 2.1. So if we could just say, or not to exceed the...
Well, I thought you said not to exceed 2.6.
2.186. There's two parts.
Okay.
And the first part stipulates that, well, the number is 2.186 here. The second part is 2.208.
Okay. Okay, are we, are we good with the motion? Yes, we're getting a yes, not, all right.
Mayor.
Yes.
I'd like to echo what Patty just said. This is an incredible step. This is, this is something I'm not sure that anybody really thought would be getting to at this point, and it's, it's huge. I hate for it to be missed.
I know.
It's more...
Maybe some fireworks. We need some fireworks.
It's really a big deal. It's huge, so...
I was going to say that we're being kind of subdued about this, but this is enormous. And it's, we're going to, you know, the one unfortunate thing about our river redevelopment is it comes in these parts, so, but each part is a celebration moment, and this is a really, really exciting one, and it's taking place after a lot of careful planning, and I have to say, some bold decision-making on the part of this city council, because it's, you know, this is something that we've had to take tax revenue to earmark for, and we're doing that because this is an area of the city that will really grow and become an incredible, exuberant place for everyone to enjoy after we make a significant investment there. So, so it is really exciting. Let's just clap, I mean, because we're, I think we're really excited. Okay, did we, we honored the moment, I think. All right. So all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? No. All right, I need a second motion on A2.
I move to approve the budget amendment, the amount of $2,208, wait, $208,000 from debt proceeds to formally establish a project budget for the CDM Smith contract and previously incurred legal costs.
Second.
All right. Any questions or comments? And I will open the public comment on this. Anyone wishing to make comment on this item? No? All right, all those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. All right. That is the unfinished business. We have new business, and I think we'll let everyone switch seats here for just a second. We're going to move to the resolution establishing a joint city-county African-American Heritage Commission. And I have on my agenda here that we're going to hear from Deborah Miles, and I'm wondering if I see her yet. No, you're saying no, she is not here yet. Is she coming?
No.
She's not coming. Okay, so are we ready to go ahead with this? Because we could take our break and come back to this, or we could do this now and then take our break.
She's not on.
Okay, we're ready to go. Yes, you're saying yes.
Yeah, let's finish.
All right, let's go ahead. Who's going to make the presentation for y'all?
There are three of us.
Okay, all right.
Three minutes each, three, and we'll get over.
Okay, okay. All right, Maggie, you've got the... How about we just do 10 minutes between the three of you, so that Maggie can keep track of it? Is that all right? Yeah?
Fine.
Okay, sure.
Madam Mayor, members of council, and staff. My name is Marvin Chambers, and we will be speaking, I will be speaking along with Deidre Wiggins-Canty, as well as James Lee. I am an Asheville native, and I've seen 72 Christmases and 72 New Years, and all of which have been lived, I have lived in this city. And the unfortunate part about all of this is that I've never had the opportunity to really know a lot about the African-American heritage, other than what was passed down to me through by word of mouth. So at this time, I'm encouraging each of you to consider what we're asking for you to do, and vote very positively for this commission. You see, some years ago, there was an E.W. Pearson, Isaac Dixon, Floyd McKissick, and James Ferguson, Dr. Holt, Ruben Daley, many others who have made their mark here in this city. Unfortunately, there are very few people who really know exactly what has happened here, and because what transpired. From the beginning, when Asheville was just a road to Tennessee from South Carolina before it was developed, and then where black folk were then sold on the county courthouse. We come and find ourselves looking and trying to find exactly what has been contributed by the African-American community. When I-40 was constructed, it came right straight through the African-American community. Then we have many other programs that have come, that has come through Asheville and just destroyed and separated the entire community. Then that says to those of us who are here, what do we pass on and what is being passed on? And we can go and read about every other nationality and ethnic group except the African-American community in this, in this city. And I would think that each of you, as you look and search within yourselves about the task that you have before you, and begin to understand that there has to be something that has to be said for the people who live here in the African-American community. We, too, have had a part in this community and helping its development. And you, as persons who are in charge of making a decision, I would ask and ask you to greatly consider how and what the impact of that decision will have on this community. You see, there are times when we are, find ourselves looking for what to say and how to say, and I believe that Mrs. Wiggins can help us understand that better.
Thank you for this opportunity. My name is Deidre Wiggins, and I'd like to give you a little history of this project. I'm going to begin with an overview of this project. It began, and this is definitely in part, so many organizations and individuals over the years have worked to bring this narrative of the African-American community to light. It's been a long time in coming. This was prompted, as I said, mostly in part from the 2006 discovery of photos taken by Andrea Clark of the East End neighborhood just prior to the onset of urban renewal in the late 1960s to mid-'70s. Clark's photographs became the basis of an educational project with the help of the Buncombe County Library about the necessity of the social fabric of neighborhoods, and included a lecture by Dr. Mindy Fuller Love in 2008. She shared research from her book, Root Shock: How Tearing Up City Neighborhoods Hurts America and What We Can Do About It. As she said, such root shock begins with, with special disastrous consequences for both the aged and the young. After the program and exhibits ended, Dr. Fuller Love encouraged the committee not to merely document the loss and work rather than, to rather work to rebuild the social fabric of the communities impacted by urban renewal. At her encouragement, the committee raised funds and invited authors to contribute to a special edition of Crossroads from the North Carolina Humanities Council, and I have some here I'd like to share with the council. There's about seven of them. And there was about 3,000 of these booklets printed, and I hope you all have seen, if you haven't seen them, then you have a chance to get some more from us if you'd like. Dr. Fuller Love felt, along with Harlan Graden of the Humanities Council, they were convinced that Asheville has a unique story, and because of the amount of visitors who come here each year, these stories could be told in ways that promote health, including physical, emotional, and economic well-being. These stories are enlightening and beneficial for local citizens and visitors alike. Crossroads tells part of the story, only part, and is a platform for further opportunities. At the city council meeting, we came to, I wasn't, I can't say "we" because I wasn't a part of that, but there was, I think it was in 2000, I can't remember the exact year, but this was when Mayor Bellamy was mayor, and she invited the committee to come back if there was anything that the council could do to help. She said, please let her know, so we're here now to let you know. The founding of an African-American Heritage Commission is an avenue, only an avenue, that could collaborate efforts between representatives of many different organizations with the authority of a government-sponsored Citizens Committee yourselves, to attract the interest of larger supporters. This is as important when it comes to fundraising, and you all know that collaboration is vital, and it's the name of the game, game these days. The aesthetic beauty of our mountains is unquestionable. However, equally as important is the bigger picture, to ensure that the promotion of indeed becoming a culturally diverse city and county, that we give credence to that, to that effort. This community, this commission would harness the power of nonprofits, neighborhoods, individuals, educational, and government agencies to help shape a brighter future and sharing our historical events. So why do we need an African-American Heritage Commission? As we stated in the resolution that you have before you, hopefully, these goals of the project are to discover, develop, promote, and implement projects and programs to recognize African-American history in Buncombe County. While it's hard, and Marvin alluded to this, and I won't go back into that, but it's embedded deeply in our history, packed place, share the history when we were in slavery, to put it lightly. We were very much invested in those days, and our young people especially need to hear the stories, without a dedicated way to tell the story to youth, both black and white. We miss the opportunity for them to understand and enlighten their heritage, prepare them for a global worldview. Is my time, or somebody's hit me, so I got to let this young man to my right. And I just want to close by saying that this is about economic development. We want to share some ways that we think this could benefit the city and county governments, education through schools, universities, fraternities, sororities, and mentoring programs, economic stimulation by increasing revenue through cultural attractions, tours, symposiums, national meetings, and social engagements, retention of African-American professionals. I will lend my time to James Lee. Thank you. Thank you for your time.
Again, my name is James Lee. I am an area minister and also a member of this community. As Ms. Wiggins alluded, this is about economic development. It's about preparing our communities for the 21st century and an economy that values diversity. As the world gets smaller and the, and America becomes more and more diverse, the importance of a diverse workforce becomes greater and greater. By uplifting the stories of the Black Mountains Carver School to the Shallows Rosenwald Schools to the historic legacies of the YMI and the renewed legacies of the Reed Center, along with other similar stories, we will not only broaden and strengthen our community, our community's self-understanding, but demonstrate our community to meet the, our commitment to meet the diverse, diverse challenges in the 21st century. Now, what are our next steps? Over the last two years, members of the committee have been meeting with other organizations and enlisting their support of the idea and the application for the nonpositions. We have already... We have already received encouragement for the project from leaders of the YMI, the NAACP. They have received encouragement for this project. The WNC Historical Association and other community leaders, including the black churches, which I have letters of support from them as well, which I'll give each council member. It is important and imperative, and at this time, it is needed that we create a commission that honors our legacy within this community.
Okay, thank you.
We'll entertain any questions, should you have any?
Thank you. Are there any questions?
I have a couple of comments, Mayor.
Yes.
First of all, thank you, Marvin, and everyone who's worked with the city and the county on the creation of this commission. People who've come forth and worked for a couple of years on putting this together have been really open in offering their time and their talent to, to this mission, to this profound mission that this commission seeks to undertake. I'm really proud to be a part of the council that's gonna get to help establish this. I think that you're presenting us an opportunity to recognize and discover and acknowledge and preserve pieces of history that might be lost otherwise, and to help us understand who we are as a community. So I, I'm very proud to be a part of this council sitting here tonight, and also very pleased to be partnering with folks at the county commission and perhaps the CRA in the future on making sure that you can fulfill your mission as thoroughly as you envision.
Okay. And I, just to let you know, I am gonna open it up, so if there are other folks that wanna make comment, they'll have an opportunity to do that.
Yeah, I wanted to make a comment that I didn't know that Andrea Clark's work was the start of the work on the commission.
That was definitely, I can't say that it was the start, because as I said, we, I have all alluded to the fact that this has been a long time coming in the minds of many, the minds of many, and just came together, sort of, just really magically came together. And it has been many years that this has been in the minds of many.
What I was gonna observe is that I have, for a number of years, published a guide to Asheville, and it was her book that caused me to include in African-American history as part of that guide, because I realized that no other guide to Asheville was mentioning that. And so, it was neat to hear that reference here, because it struck me particularly at the time when her book came out and her exhibition and so forth.
Thank you.
I'm fully supportive of this.
Thank you.
I'd just like to say that we, we all know that the African-American community in Asheville has been challenged over the years, as you suggest, as you say, with the I-40 and urban renewal, but there's also a rich history here, and I, I challenge you all, tell a story, tell, get the stories out, and that's what I really look forward to you all doing, and I appreciate your work.
Gwen, did you have any questions or comments?
I was lucky enough to chair the Boards and Commissions Committee during the several meetings we had with the organizers, and this is a really exciting project, and there are a lot of functions of this commission, I think, that many envision, and some pretty, pretty obvious regarding heritage, of course, and history. But I, we also discuss the hope that this commission might be able to be a sounding board for projects or planning that might take place in historically African-American communities and provide a forum for community input and collaboration. So I think that's really, really exciting, because the city is trying to, you know, put together a lot of different, you know, what the city hopes will be enhance, enhancement type of projects and infrastructure investment, but that will, will probably be placed in historically African-American communities. And so this is a great way to be able to constructively engage a community.
Thank you, Mayor Manheimer, and that is precisely what the intention of the committee is. So thank you, thank you for those comments.
All right. If there's anyone else here tonight that would like to make a comment, please, I see a couple of hands. All right. All right, everyone gets three minutes, so that we'll be able to get through this. If that's all right, feel free to state your name to begin with.
I'll be very, very brief. Mayor Manheimer and city council, thank you for this opportunity. My name is Dr. Lamar Hilton. I'm standing on behalf, as a member of the Board of Directors for the YMI Cultural Center, and on behalf of our Board Chair Sharon West and the rest of the Board of Directors, we fully support and endorse the creation of an African-American Heritage Commission here in Nashville, North Carolina. We are so supportive of the preservation of the cultural history of African-Americans here in western North Carolina, and we ask that you generously, generously say yes to this initiative. Thank you so much, and good evening.
Thank you. All right. Anyone else? Yes.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, Council. My name is Macy O'Keeling. I'm a business owner here in Asheville of Asheville Business Accelerators that does strategic planning and development for businesses and organizations like yours. I fully endorse this initiative as well. I've had occasion to work with many of the individuals working in this African-American heritage, and I am a transplant from Los Angeles, California. And when I arrived here three years ago, I have to say, of the many, many choices that I had, and I really scrutinized our nation for a place to retire, I chose Asheville above the rest. But when I got here, I have to say, I was woefully disappointed at the visibility of the African-American community, both professional and non-professional. To that end, I'd just like to extend my support to them and my services to the council in any way that I can attempt to be a liaison between the community, the African-American business owners that I've had the occasion to work with, or just to pick my brain about what I think is a viable way to move forward with this initiative. And I thank you for your bold thinking and your support of the initiative. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Cece Weston, and I'm a native of Asheville, and just wanted to say thank you for your consideration in this commission. I'm coming with two hats. First hat, NAACP Executive Committee. I work with the youth there, and what I see is that our youth don't know much about our heritage. And, and as a result, we're not seeing many of the young professionals that grew up here in Asheville come back to Asheville. And so it's very important that our youth understand where we've come from and where we need to go. And this is why the commission is very important. I also work with the YWCA Youth Program there, and again, it's the same stories over and over again. Our youth just do not know the heritage, and so that's very important. If we want to bring young black professionals back to Asheville once they leave, then they need to know where they're coming from. Thank you for your consideration.
Good evening, Madam new Mayor and Council. Thank you for having us here and to hear our cause on this. I wasn't originally going to speak, because I sometimes feel, because I'm not local, I don't have a full voice to, to commit to it, but I, as I was sitting here, I thought, I'm gonna talk to them about tourist dollars. I'm not an expert-
And that's the name, we all know your name.
Oh, I'm Carmen Ramos Kennedy. I reside at 24 Curve Street.
What do you mean, not local?
(laughing) I'm native. I'm not an expert on tourism, but anecdotally, I can tell you, interest in African-American history and culture is growing by leaps and bounds. That interest is not exclusive to African-Americans, not by a long shot. People in general are more interested in learning more about African-American history, which in fact is American history, than ever. With Asheville's close proximity to the major metropolitan areas of Charlotte and Atlanta, there are tourist dollars to be made on African-American history and culture. I urge you to vote affirmatively on this resolution. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else wishing to speak on this item?
Good evening, city council. My name is Timothy Sadler, and I just wanted to take a moment to personally applaud everyone for allowing this to come to council, and also for the great energy I feel in the room around this commission's formation, hopefully. Just a quick note, through being out there in the community and talking to folks, really getting to know Asheville over the last run of years, one of the most, one of the, one of the best things that I've come to learn is the rich history that we have here in terms of African-American heritage. There's just so many amazing stories that I think people are gonna be so impressed to learn about, and I just really look forward to this commission being formed and how it'll be able to serve the community moving forward.
All right, thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak?
Good evening, council members. I'm Richard Graham. I live in Asheville. I am here to represent the Western North Carolina Historical Association, and just to tell you that we really support this fully. This is a part of a history that needs to get out there, that we have done a little bit on, but not nearly enough, and I'm hoping that we can collaborate on some programming and that this will really be a fruitful coalition. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak on this item? No? Okay.
I move to approve the resolution establishing the Joint City-County African-American Heritage Commission.
Second. Okay. Any other questions or comments? All right, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right.[1331.15][1331.15](applause) It's a night full of applause. All right, our last item, I'm gonna hand it over to our vice mayor.
So, this is the point at which we discuss appointments and interviews, et cetera, for our boards and commissions. Boards and Commissions Committee met just before the council session tonight, and we have a, a number of recommendations to offer. I'd like to preface by first thanking everyone who serves on these boards and commissions, and those that apply and express interest. It's really vital work supporting the city's leadership and direction. A phenomenal amount of work goes on at that level. For any of those out in the public curious about what boards and commissions do and what they're about, we've got plenty of content easy to find on the city's website, and we are always eager to have good applicants for the many seats that come open. So today, there are a number of boards and commissions that will take on here. The first one is the Board of Adjustment. There are three vacancies coming, or three seats to be filled coming up. All three of the seats have folks that are eligible for reappointment. The Boards and Commissions Committee recommends to council reappointment of those three, and they are Douglas Hattaway for a regular seat, David Brown for a regular seat, and Max Weisgood as an alternate. Council, I'll remind you, you have the opportunity to move for appointments other than what the Boards and Commissions Committee would recommend, but in order to move forward, we need a motion adopting the recommendation of the committee or otherwise. So moved by Mr. Pelley. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Davis. Any, any discussion?
Public comment on these?
No, there's no public comment.
No public comment. Further discussion? All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None. Community Relations Council, one-
Vice Mayor? Sorry to, sorry to interrupt. Just before you get any deeper into this, I know you all have had some discussions about it, but I wanted to let you know that I have yet to be able to connect with the board chair over there, and I would seek the indulgence of council in perhaps putting this off until I have the opportunity to meet with the commission and discern their needs.
Yeah?
Okay, so the Boards and Commissions Committee had a recommendation that we were to offer, but Councilman Smith offered a different idea. Any, any discussion?
I would be supportive of that. I think that there's some changes that happened there, and there's some opportunities perhaps would be, there's probably not the urgency to appoint tonight, to probably to determine direction, and the needs would probably well outweigh.
So, I think technically, Maggie, what this means is, we, we're not gonna make the appointment tonight, nor are we extending an application period. We're just, we're gonna come back to this at an upcoming meeting, and-
(inaudible) in February?
Great, thank you.
Thanks.
Great, thank you, sir. Fireman's Relief Fund. Pat Leckie is interested in reappointment, 100% attendance. The committee recommends her reappointment. I'll entertain a motion to that effect.
So moved.
Further discussion? All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed? Homeless Initiative Advisory Board. There's been a request that we delay consideration of appointments to the March 11th meeting. Boards and Commissions Committee supports that suggestion by the Homeless Advisory, Initiative Advisory Committee, and suggests we delay there. Any discussion or concern about that step here? I don't think we need a motion for that, do we? Okay. Riverfront Redevelopment Commission. The terms of Joe Fariqas and Cindy Weeks come due now. Both are interested in reappointment. The Boards and Commissions Committee recommends those reappointments. Additionally, with the action earlier tonight where we essentially merged the Design Review Committee into the Riverfront Redevelopment Commission, there had been a seat on this commission's board designated for the chair of the Design Review Committee. Since the Design Review Committee is going away, the, the commission will have that seat still available with the intent that it be filled by a design professional. The, a former member of the Design Review Committee, Carlton Collins, an architect, has expressed interest and applied for that position. So in addition to the reappointments, our committee suggests appointment of Carlton Collins as well to fill the, the design professional seat.
Vice Mayor, I'd like to add that Mr. Collins has been very active for the past year with the commission and has been an active part, very vital to bring forward some, some professional help to the commission, and has, was active in the, this past year's retreat. He's been a viable ex-ficio member over there now, so I think he's a really good appointment.
So moved. Second.
Further discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye. Aye. Opposed? Sustainable Advisory Committee on Energy and Environment, N-E-environment, otherwise known as SACE, there are three seats coming open. One of those seats occupied by Melanie Brethauer, she is no longer eligible. Tim Ballard occupies another, he is not interested. The third is occupied by Duncan McPherson, who actually is the chair of that commission. He is interested in reappointment. The committee recommends his reappointment to that seat here tonight.
So moved.
Second to that.
Second.
Any further discussion on the appointment of Duncan McPherson? All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Opposed? Now, the other two seats that are going vacant here, the committee recommends interviewing these three candidates, Sonia Marcus, Mindy Fisher, Mary Ann Garwood. There were a number of additional applicants, and as always, if there's a preference by any member of council that we inter- any member of council that we interview a candidate beyond those three, I'm certain we would entertain that, but the recommendation is to interview those three at least.
So moved.
Need a second to? We've got a motion, a second. Any further discussion? Additional folks to interview? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Pre-commission. Two seats currently occupied by Debbie Emmons and Mike Kenton, both interested in reappointment. Our committee recommends reappointment of both of those individuals.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
All those in favor? Whoop, further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Vice Mayor Hunt, if I can, if I can get those three in for interviews on January 28th, those interviews will begin at 4:14, and I'll email you to put that on your agenda.
Yeah, please. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right.
Done.
Great, okay. I have three sign-up sheets, four sign-up sheets, for those wishing to make comment here at the end. The first is Timothy Sadler.
Good evening once again, Madam Mayor, City Council. Forgot to mention before, Happy New Year. I am here this evening to ask for clarification as to why we put fluoride in our water supply. I, if I'm correct, it's a federal policy put down by the Department of Public Health and EPA as something that's a good thing. So, you know, I think that that position is to say that medicating the water is a good thing for people's health. Now, the science is in, there's a Harvard study that shows fluoridation of the water lowers the IQ of people who consume it, and the bigger issue is the idea of forced medication, which is against the Geneva Convention. There is a growing movement around this country to bring lawsuits along those lines, and I think it would be wise to really take a good, hard look at this issue, because my personal opinion is that we are potentially liable for forcibly medicating the public. And I'll follow up with an email. There's a great documentary, it's called Fluoride Gate, where it really shows how back in the late 90s, late 80s, the chief toxicologist for the EPA was basically blackmailed. And when he did not go along with falsifying data, he was fired, but then reinstated. And anyway, this documentary gives a great long and short of the issue, and I hope you all will take the time to really take a good, hard look at this issue, because I know that there are a lot of people in this community that care deeply about water purity and as it relates to food and public health as well. So thank you for your time.
Thank you. And I have actually spent a lot of time with this topic, so I will, just for anyone who happens to be listening at this moment, Asheville's voters voted to put fluoride in the water system, I think it was back in 67, 60s, some, some, 60s. And then there was a, the following year, a referendum to remove it from the water, which failed. So fluoride is in our water system as a result of a vote of the population. However, we have reduced the amount of fluoride that is put into the water per the CDC, I think it's the CDC's recommendations, to, they came out with recommendations that they advised. But I am aware that this, and we all are aware, that this discussion is happening in Asheville. We do receive emails from time to time, and I personally have met several times with advocates for removing fluoride from our water. And the conclusion at this point is that it will require a vote of the people to remove it because of this unique way that fluoride came into Asheville's water system.
Interesting. Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
And since you're commenting on it, Mayor, I would offer that I would certainly support a referendum on the issue, because the science has changed and public opinion has changed, and I think it'd be worth putting it up to the people sometime.
All right, the next item on the agenda, oh, sorry, the next item on the, the next person I have signed up is Jeannie Rosenthal. I hope I said that right. Go ahead and say your name if I didn't get it right.
Regarding some low-income housing managed by Partnership Property Management, PPM, recently the newspaper announced apartments go smoke, to go smoke-free. This sounds like great news, but the truth is the opposite, at least for the already non-smoking building that I'm, was familiar with. The article says that PPM was requesting tenants to sign a lease addendum to move smoking 25 feet away from the apartment property, but PPM employees already knew that would not be enforceable, as the city sidewalk abuts the apartment property and anyone can smoke there. The truth is that PPM had not one, but three lease addendums for tenants to sign. The additional lease addendums, not mentioned in the article, involved allowing so-called electronic cigarettes to be smoked indoors. And once liquid nicotine, electronic cigarettes are allowed in apartments, people start using dry leaf, dry leaf nicotine cigarettes in the privacy of their apartment as well, a fact that PPM seems to acknowledge in the third addendum. In the newspaper article, Rick Allen, a vice president and the chief operating officer of PPM, states that smoking increases the risk of fires. Indeed it does, and now with all the smoking in the building, the risk of fire is greatly increased, especially as electronic cigarettes have been known to explode and cause fires. To add fuel to the fire, seven of the apartments in the building have bright yellow and black signs saying caution, oxygen in use. And a number of the low-income tenants are disabled and use motorized scooters to get around. In case of a fire, one shudders to think if they would even make it out in time. In the newspaper article, Rick Allen states that when tenants move, it costs far more to move, it costs far more to clean the apartments of a smoker. This is true, but now with the stench of electronic cigarette smoke throughout the building, including in the apartments of non-smokers, it will be virtually impossible to clean. Then to top it all off, even though PPM is being paid to manage the apartments, in the newspaper article, Rick Allen states that PPM expects tenants to do the enforcement of PPM's faulty policy. You can imagine what kind of relations that makes for in the building. So what needs to be done? First, do all that you can to keep control as local as possible. Partnership Property Management is based in Greensboro and does business in five states. Low-income housing should not be monopolically controlled. Second, and most important, is that Asheville joined the many other entities that have passed ordinances to ensure that liquid nicotine cigarettes, electronic cigarettes be treated the same as dry leaf nicotine cigarettes. I ask Asheville City Council to do this without delay to protect the health and safety of citizens and tourists alike in Asheville.
Ms. Rosenthal, could you tell us which apartment building you're talking about?
The particular one, there's, there's units all over the five states. The particular one I'm talking about is the Griffin.
Okay.
And it was non-smoking. It was wonderful. I lived there almost four years, and other people lived there longer, and it was wonderful to have it non-smoking. If they wanted to smoke, they had to go outside. They had a very nice area across the driveway from the entrance where they could go and smoke. Very nice place, and that worked out. And now all of a sudden, the whole place is just, it smells and it's causing health problems, and it just shouldn't be.
Okay, thank you. I have a sign-up sheet from Dr. Milton Byrd.
My name's Dr. Milton Byrd. I'm here tonight to make a request that I can be on the agenda for next month for a resolution of support. I have been a longtime advocate for the new medical science of cannabis. Twenty-two states have, including Washington DC, have legalized medical cannabis, and the research is growing in leaps and bounds, that it is cutting-edge understanding of what's called the endocannabinoid system in the human body. It is needed in medicine in this state. I know of a recent medical case where it was a life-saving intervention using Drenabital, a synthetic cannabinoid, for a young girl. It is something that needs to be available to the citizens. And this past summer, when the General Assembly took a look at the Medical Cannabis Act and turned it down, they literally made the claim, and I'll quote Representative Paul Stans, "We have not heard from our local elected officials on this subject at all." Well, it's time for the voice to be raised by our elected officials, because I can tell you the science is there. It needs to be made available for patients here in this state, and it needs to be addressed and supported by our local elected officials. You guys know me from my long history, that I have my own past in the political arena, and I also understand the medical arena, which I've put decades in. I make the request to be on next month's resolution. Thank you, consider that request, and it's for a resolution of support. I wish to have several organizations come and present for that resolution of support on the subject of medical cannabis. Last night I was at the Town of Fletcher, and they said they are willing to look at doing a resolution of support for a voice of the people because of some of the citizens in the town are having issues that play into this. It is a significant issue. For years, I have been trying to share the science with the public on what is going on when we have been so literally lied to in propaganda. I ask you to accept my proposal so next month we can raise the voice for the people, and Asheville is a wonderful community to understand that. Thank you very much.
Thank you. The final sign-up sheet I have is for Todd Stimson.
Can I pass this resolution? I'm Todd Stimson, hello. I really appreciate.
Maggie, that's gonna buzz. Sorry.
I really appreciate you giving me the opportunity to come up here. I have a resolution that I'd like you guys to review and possibly put it on the agenda next month, and what it is, is in support of the renewal of industrial hemp as an agricultural crop in North Carolina. In 2006, the North Carolina State Legislative passed a bill to create an independent commission to study the beneficial uses of industrial hemp. Among other studies, but there has never been any report or follow-through to the study. American companies have been forced to import millions of dollars worth of hemp seed and fiber products annually from Canada, Europe, and China, thereby effectively denying American farmers an opportunity to complete, or to compete in sharing the profits. Nutritious hemp foods can be found in grocery stores nationwide, and strong durable hemp fibers can be found in interior parts of millions of American cars. Buildings are being constructed using hemp and lime mixture, thereby sequestering carbon. We have one right here in Asheville, the Hemp House. Retail sales of hemp products in this country are estimated to be over 400 million annually. Industrial hemp is a high-value, low-input crop that is not genetically modified and requires little or no pesticides, can be dry land-farmed, and uses less fertilizer than wheat and corn. The reluctance of the United States Drug Enforcement Administration to permit industrial hemp farming is denying agricultural producers in this country the ability to benefit from a high-value, low-input crop, which can provide significant income benefits to producers and manufacturers. The United States Drug Enforcement Administrative has the authority under the Controlled Substance Act to allow this state to regulate industrial hemp farming under existing laws without requiring individual federal applications. I urge the Asheville City Council and the city of Asheville to urge legislators to recognize industrial hemp as a valuable agricultural commodity, to define industrial hemp in federal law as a non-psychoactive and genetically identified species of the genus cannabis. To acknowledge that allowing and encouraging farmers to produce industrial hemp will improve the balance of trade by promoting domestic sources of industrial hemp, and to assist the United States producers by removing barriers to state regulation of the commercial product of industrial hemp. We urge the United States Drug Enforcement to allow the state to regulate it as hemp farming under existing state laws. Then also on the back, the second page I have, where this helps out, instead of it just being at the state level, we would like it that the Secretary of State shall forward copies of this resolution to the President of the United States, to the Attorney General of the United States, the Administrator of the United States Drug Enforcement Administration, and the Director of the Office of National Drug Control Policy, the United States Secretary of Agriculture, and to each member of the state's congressional delegate. And it's been around for pretty much the beginning of our country, and was actually required by law during World War II for people to produce industrial hemp. It's just a matter of getting local support to recognize it as being agricultural, and I appreciate the time.
Thank you. All right, is there anyone else here wishing to make public comment on anything that was not on our agenda tonight? All right, we've got a closed session, and we will adjourn from.
Before we have the closed session motion, just one brief comment that I wanted to share with council. I was at the Homelessness Initiative Advisory Committee meeting today, and they were doing their continuum of care competition rants, but it morphed into a conversation around Code Purple and Code Purple's effectiveness. And I wanted to be able to share with council that because of the protocols around Code Purple and because of the dedication of our service providers, we, there were zero lives lost among the homelessness community during the polar vortex events here in Asheville when we had sub-zero temperatures. So kudos to the folks who are bringing that policy to the forefront and communicating it where it needs to be communicated, and the providers who are following through because they save lives.
I move that the Asheville City Council go into closed session for the following reasons. One, to prevent disclosure of information that is privileged and confidential pursuant to the laws of North Carolina, or not considered a public record within the meaning of Chapter 132 of the general statutes. The law that makes the information privileged and confidential is NCGS 143-318.10E. The statutory authorization is contained in NCGS 143-318.11A1. And two, to consult with an attorney employed by the city about matters with respect to which the attorney-client privilege between the city and its attorney must be preserved, including a lawsuit involving the following parties: Mary Ann Wilcox, Stony Gompes, Brian Hogan, Sherri Inbell. The statutory authorization is contained in GS 143-318.11A3.
Second.
All right, and we will adjourn from the closed session. All right, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Okay.
Thank you.